Like everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll, please.
Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Clistic. Belzak.
Here.
I see that Alderman Clistic is connecting to audio at this time. Hold on just one more minute. Alderman Clistic.
I'm here.
Seven present, no absent.
We have a question and comments and announcements of the general nation. We have a gentleman who wants to make an appearance tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to stop in tonight and let you know about a compliment to the city. I grew up in a small town of eight hundred people and we had a, we had a saying there that it never snows in forest view. And it was, it was beautiful. The streets are always taken care of. We felt it was always clean. I have seen such an improvement in Darien and the way the streets are taken care of out here. And I know sometimes people can get a bad rap for the way the plows are, but I have to tell you, it's, it's great. It's great to go down the street. In my travels throughout the day, I go to another, many other communities. And sometimes it's hard to get through them. We are really in a fortunate position in town. I just wanted to say something that maybe people don't get too many compliments from time to time about the job they're doing. I mean, literally, I live on Green Valley Road and we see traffic going by and oftentimes the plows are cleaning up all the time. So I'd like to say thank you and Dan, you're doing a great job with the group.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else?
No one else?
Here. Take the school approval of the minutes for February first, twenty twenty one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Eric.
Yeah, I, I just, can I bring up my item now?
Why don't you bring it up? Receiving a communication.
Okay, will do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's get the minutes approved first. Motion to approve.
Alderman Shower.
Something about Alderman Vaughn.
And the roll.
Shower.
Hi.
Vaughn.
Hi.
Belzak.
Hi.
Gustafson.
Hi.
Kenny.
Hi.
Sullivan.
Hi.
Clistic. He raised his hand.
Hi.
Thank you. Seven approved.
This has been approved. There's a receiving of communication. Ready to hold in that communications to share.
Alderman Penny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, an indirect communication from social media on Nextdoor app from over the weekend. A gentleman named Lucas Cassidy was driving down the street and he posted it. At sixty seven, the cast on Saturday morning about nine forty five in the morning. One of our officers was on the side of the road helping a, a citizen change a tire. So I said I would try to find out who that officer was and it's Joe Passick. So I told, told the resident, we let Chief Thomas know. Deputy Chief Norton is on this, on this video here today. So I'm hoping that they do something nice for Officer Passick. That's all I have for communications here tonight. Oh, and, oh, but, and by the, by the way, Mr. Passick is a Brother Rice Crusader. That's why, that's why I'm also happy to present that out too, okay?
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one communication from Miguel at seven, seventy three, fourteen Brookbank. We're still having issues with the Airbnb at seven, seventy three, thirteen Clarity Hills Road. He, he sent me a text on February seventh, very frustrated with the parties that are continuing, continuing to happen at this house. I'm not sure where we are on the Airbnb legality, but I, I literally get a text from him probably every other, every time it happens, basically. So I'm not sure we have any insight to share with him or if we could mitigate this, this, this issue, but he's, he's definitely frustrated. He's threatening to, he's threatening to take legal action and, and so that's where he is.
Alderman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just sure if I was an alderman for first or an employee, but I'm sorry, just to follow up to Alderman Vaughn's comments, we had inquired back probably about six months ago, nine months ago with our city attorney. Our city attorney is currently in litigation. We're not sure where it stands to a similar situation in another municipality. So let me follow up with our attorney and see where they're at. Again, it may still be suspended due to the pandemic. But we'll follow up and I'll let you know.
So just, just to be clear, we have no legal right to, to make them cease and desist whatever rentals they're doing right now. We have no, we have no legal grounds to do that as a city.
The only real grounds that we have is if it was a long term and there was people there, there were more, and I believe the code is one blood related relative. Okay, or non-blood related relative. So the bottom line is that when these reservations occur, it seems like they're happening on maybe for a weekend basis, if I'm not mistaken. By the time we would get the notice out, those people would be gone and there'd be no case again. So it's a little bit of a frustrating level from our end as well. But we'll see what opportunities there are. We're not the first town to be dealing with this. Brian, I think you may have something to add to this.
Just, I would advise the person texting you Lester that if there's anything related to, you know, disturbing the peace, those types of things, to call nine one one. You know, if, if they texted you and, and he's upset, I, I don't know what may have been going on. Is there cars parked all, all over? Are there people drinking beer all over the neighborhood? You know, it depends on what it is, but certainly if it's anything that requires any kind of police action, hopefully they're calling nine one one.
I believe the police or, you know, Darien, Darien police have been by there during those times.
We'll, we'll follow up. I just wanted to make sure they know, but we'll, we'll follow up with Deputy Chief and Chief later in the week.
Perfect. Eric, thank you.
Isn't there, have, have we notified or can we notify the owner of the residence and let them know what our, you know, policy is on short-term rentals?
Well, I think that's what Dan was saying. Right now, you know, it's, it's not necessarily illegal to do. And, and we have to, we have to get some more information. As Dan mentioned, there's certain circumstances that might happen that would make, certainly make this a non-permitted use. And, and other things might be permitted, might not be illegal. So it really depends individually. And if there's, that's why I'm suggesting if we have a record of this and there's a number of violations, whether there be police file, you know, police violations or zoning violations, that would all help us deal with the actual owner of the property or the Airbnb, whoever manages that for the owner.
Okay.
Eric. Yeah, if I, if I got this right now, I believe the appropriate procedure for this next item is for me to request an agenda item be added to the next meeting to request a revision to Darien City Ordinance oh thirty four nineteen, which is the regulation respect to cannabis business. Specifically, I'm requesting a revision to item A to add the former Steak and Shake building to the permitted use listing. You know, I feel that this location is an ideal spot for a marijuana store. It's a standalone. Plenty of seventy-five parking spots. It's surrounded by Home Depot to the west, the bank to the east, shopping center to the north and a substantial fence and shrubbery to the south separating the location from residential homes. And actually, the distance from the building to the closest home is over a hundred and ninety feet. By, and by, the thing is by making this change now rather than waiting for a prospective retailer to come in, this just makes this property that much more, more, more attractive. Because, you know, we're in competition right now with, with local entities such as Westmont and Naperville. And as you know, I mean, Naperville originally voted down marijuana stores and now they just opened up their third store. So we're under a lot of competition for a lot of very hefty, hefty revenue. So I'd like to, if I've got this correct, Brian, I'd like to get this added as an agenda item for, for the next meeting. I would have you ask the council if there's interest in our having this as an agenda item for our next meeting. Alderman Close, Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Belzak and all the customers. Okay, we have four aldermen. So what we will do at this point, Brian, is we will put this, compose an agenda item that the council will vote on. And that vote will be to go through the process of planning and zoning municipal services and then sit in council. Mr. Batty, have you had anything?
Yeah, I think, I don't recall when the city council discussed permitted uses for retailers or not. This was on the special use list, not the permitted list. But what the council will be discussing in two weeks is just, it's a, it's direction to hold a public hearing before the plan commission to consider the rezoning and make a recommendation back to the city. So the residents that do live behind the Steak and Shake will be notified of the, of the public hearing and will certainly have a chance to, to weigh in during that public hearing. I don't remember the exact requirement. I think it's two hundred and fifty feet within the property. But certainly it would be nice if the residents over there were sure that with that whole neighborhood. So they're aware and, and could, you know, provide any testimony or opinions for the public hearing. So it's, it's nothing that, so in two weeks, it's nothing that happens officially to change the zoning.
Does everybody understand that? We're strictly going to have an agenda item that we vote on, that you vote on, which basically sends this through the regular process, planning municipal services and then coming back to the council.
Okay.
Just as long as everybody understands that that's the process.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other?
Thank you. Okay.
Now we take us to the mayor's report. And there's no mayor's report tonight, surprisingly. There's no updates. We'll move on to the city clerk's report. Joanne.
No report this evening.
Metal to the city administrator's report and Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, because of the light agenda, we thought it would be a good idea to get a little jump start on the budget. That is really formally scheduled to start for tomorrow. This will help, you know, going forward with the meetings to focus on the expenses. So what I wanted to do tonight is just give really a quick review of the three-year overview of the general capital projects, water fund and the motor fuel tax fund. Again, look at that three-year picture and then look at the specific revenues and cover any questions the council may have. And the packet, or I'll call it the subpacket is in the council packet and it's paged. So I'll just go through that in order, starting with page one, which is the general fund summary. Again, as we, as we do the budgets, we look at one-year budget and two-year forecast and page one of the handout is the general fund summary. And the third column in from the left is the fiscal year ending twenty-one estimated actual. So the, the staff will take a look at where we predict will be at April thirtieth of this year and where we'll end the fiscal year. So the, the actual third column there shows revenues of about fifteen million four hundred thousand. And that was, we were very fortunate to receive about a million one in CARES Act's fund that filtered from the federal government down to, through to DuPage County. So without that, we would have definitely been under our budgeted revenue, but because of that, it put us slightly over.
And Brian, is there any, is there any hope of getting additional funds?
For what? CARES Act?
Yeah, any, any other grant?
Not this, not, not now. The, the CARES Act money that the city council, if you recall, approved an intergovernmental agreement with the county. And that money is gone and we have our allocation. The county has utilized their allocation. So there's no more from that CARES Act funding.
Nothing from a federal level?
Uh, no, we, that was it. We got the million one from the, from the CARES Act, which was the federal money. So again, if I'm looking at page one on the three-year overview, there's really a few things I look at and this gives you a good snapshot of where the revenues and expenses are. And there's a couple of really important numbers here that I look at in preparing the budget. Those being, if you look again at the same column, the estimated actual, all the way at the bottom of that column, it shows a estimated ending fund balance of four point five million. So that would have been a bit better than I had originally predicted during the budget. And then that four point five, four point five million starts the actual budget for fiscal year twenty-two, which is the next column over. So again, the, the numbers I look at to get a snapshot of how healthy the general fund is are those three columns. We'll look at the transfer to capital. So once you have the revenues and the expenses, we are fortunate where our general fund revenues exceed our expenses and they have for, for years now. And they will continue to do that, as I'll point out. And that's important because that's the money we transfer to our capital projects fund. So in this snapshot, we'll, we show a transfer to capital over three years of two point one million in the upcoming fiscal year. And it goes down in fiscal year ending twenty-three to seven hundred thousand. And then in fiscal year ending twenty-four, we'll see that is a million dollars transferred to capital projects. And the ending fund balance that we try to stick to is, is a ninety-day operating reserve at approximately three million dollars. And we are able to do that over the three-year period. Specifically with the, with the revenue portion of the general fund and the overview. We did see things like sales tax in our restaurant, food and beverage tax are, are coming in lower than, than budgeted, which again, it's, it's, it's due to the COVID and the pandemic. And as I'm looking forward, I am looking at fiscal year ending twenty-two, where some of our revenues will bounce back. And but at this point, I'm not calling for those to fully bounce back like in our retail tax and again, our restaurant taxes, things that are associated with the retail tax. But the, in years two or three of the budget, I am calling for a bounce back where we can get back to the normal revenues that we anticipate and that we use to, to fund all of our general fund expenses and transfer to the capital projects. So again, when you look at those three years of revenues, they go back to that first cover page we talked about and give you a snapshot of the, of the three years of the general fund. Now, as we get into the budget tomorrow, you'll start looking at all the expenses. And if there's expenses that the city council wants to, wants to cut, wants to change, either there, you, you do that for additional projects, additional priorities or to have more money to, to transfer into the capital projects fund. But I think all in all, we're happy to see the bounce back and, and see us get back into more of what's normal for the city. Most of our, our projects that we'll be talking about are back in the budget this year, our purchases, like our larger trucks that were up for purchase last year and our projects, whether they're in the street operation or capital projects, we're seeing those allocated again into the proposed draft budget. So if you go to page four, which is the capital projects budget.
Brian?
Yes.
If I could just interject one quick thing here. I, I mean, I'm not trying to depress anyone, but I don't want to go into this with totally rosy picture either. I think you'll be the first to admit, as we've been reviewing some of these numbers, that even though you're projecting in year two and three, things coming back fairly dramatically. You know, Illinois Municipal League, I mean, a lot of these numbers, even for this current budget year that we're going into are a little bit of a shot in the dark. The Illinois Municipal League has been bouncing around with their numbers quite a bit between June and February. And surprisingly, they've been coming back fairly strong, barring a second go-around with potential COVID or a different type of COVID or anything. So again, I want everybody to pay attention to that too. It's, it's our best guess at this point and our best hope that they do come back that strongly. But the numbers are probably a little more fluid than we, well, definitely a lot more fluid than we've anticipated in the past. And going into it with our fingers crossed and assuming everything holds up, I think we're okay going the direction we're going. But if something dramatic happens, we may have to react. But for right now, I'm on all fours with you. But again, I think you've been challenged, I know, as we've been having some of these discussions, where are the numbers going to be coming in going forward? And again, it's, we're trying to be as enlightened as we can with some input from the Illinois Municipal League. Again, a lot of it's going to pertain to a lot of things that we really don't have control over.
Well, that's why I think as we look at a budget with a two-year forecast, that's critical. And, you know, the, obviously, we're, we're sitting here a year from now, some of those things could change. I think in part, I'm a bit optimistic because the, the city did hold off on all of our project, most of our projects and purchases this year. And to be conservative, which we do every year in our budget. So I think that's another reason, though, to be optimistic. It's not, certainly nice to get back to projects and, and vehicle purchases and equipment and services to the citizens. Our core services, obviously, you know, have, have not been touched. The, the snow plowing, we've been having this last week and, and how they do that and our police services, all of those were not changed, but a lot of the projects and our equipment, those types of things had changed. So yeah, I'm a bit optimistic now, but, but certainly as I look out to our transfer to the capital projects fund, Mike, over three years, recognize that's less and only, and when we get to the capital projects fund, it, it's, it's a good three-year picture should these estimates hold up. But again, we, we do reevaluate these every year. But back to the capital projects fund on page four.
Brian, if I could pull you back one more time?
Sure.
One little thing I would like to highlight for the council in year three, if you look at the top line, if you're looking at the revenue, the detail of the revenue, you'll look at the real estate tax.
Yes.
And you will notice in the current year, we're looking for a levy of approximately two million two hundred seventy-six thousand. Once you get to year three, it's two million five hundred and fifty-one thousand. That's a sizable jump considering we've never raised our real estate taxes.
Correct.
Yeah, keeping them static. I think it's important for the council to note the reason you did that was because the police pension, the projections for where that number is going to be. And year three, the police pension is going to eat up a hundred percent of our real estate tax levy. So you actually have to increase the levy to cover the police pension. Now that doesn't factor in what Joe was talking about in our work session, depending if the state adjusts the police pension funding or anything like that. But I just wanted to flag that for the councils and note that that does indicate that we are proposing or looking at a potential real estate tax increase in year three, should things not change from where they are right now.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. And I, I had meant to bring that up. That third year in fiscal year twenty-four real estate tax, there's a couple of things working there. We do have a bond that we are paying off out of the capital projects fund in that same year. So while this is increasing the overall tax levy by about two hundred and fifty thousand, another area of the tax levy will be decreasing in the capital projects fund, not by that same amount. So you're, you're correct.
It drops in that year by about ninety-three thousand.
Correct. So then, you know, again, as we get closer there, we'll see if that real estate tax will cover it or won't cover it. And if it would take the increase, as you mentioned, or if it would take, you know, some other alternate revenue to make up that gap. But you're right, in the third year, we're getting to that, to that point.
Sorry, that's, sorry for the bother.
No, no bother, Mike. Good question. And then back to the capital projects. As we look on page four, that's the three-year picture of the capital projects. Over the three-year period, it shows us back to all of our projects that we're accustomed to, our roads, our curb and gutter, our drainage projects, crack ceiling and those types of things. And at the levels that Dan plans for, so it's approximately five miles of roads and all the curb and gutter associated with those roads. So we could see that back on track. And as we get into the expense side of this, starting tomorrow, we will note that while the capital projects fund does not show road improvement budget for next fiscal year, that's only because we're starting to use more of the motor fuel tax revenue to help us pay for the road projects. So you'll see a one-year savings out of the capital projects fund for, for the road expenses.
Again, Brian, if I can interject just one thing there, you covered that very well. The MFT basically is going to be covering our road expenses for the current fiscal year. But again, if you look at the third year out, the ending fund balance in the capital projects fund is just over two million dollars. And our ongoing, what we consider our core services, if you look at that year, are approximately two point five million dollars. So the reserve, once we get to the end of the year three, again, assuming all these three years pan out, the reserve is not even sufficient for covering that next year out. So just as we go into that, and you can't really count on the MFT. The MFT has historically been at a fairly stable three hundred to five hundred thousand dollar mark. It's built over the last year, year and a half because of some extra funds that we've been given that are allowing us to absorb the, the roads basically through the MFT this year.
Um. Yeah, that's correct. And again, if, if we were to go, if we were to take this out of fourth year, it certainly gets tighter. It, a fourth year would also give hopefully some transfer in from the general fund. But, you know, as we get closer to that, to, to this point next year, we'll have a much better idea. Hopefully, some of the conservative numbers that we have for revenues will pan out a little better, but at this point, again, we, we, it's not, it's not good to predict those revenues will be high because we still certainly don't know. And that is the overview on the general fund and capital projects fund. Again, overview again as a three-year snapshot. On page five and six are the water fund and water depreciation fund budgets, three-year budgets. And that's similar to the general fund and capital projects fund, whereas we have a, a water fund that's supported primarily by user fees. And then that pays all the expenses, which is primarily the DuPage Water, purchasing that from the Water Commission. But we also have a surplus in the water fund that if, if we are able to generate a surplus, that gets transferred in part to the water depreciation fund. The budget this year for the water fund does not call for a water rate increase. It would maintain the current rates. And as we look out in, in the following two years, it does show a twenty-five cent increase per thousand gallons. But again, we've been able to hold that off. And as you'll see in the water depreciation fund, one of the large, the biggest program we have is this, is the water meter turnover to automated meter reading system. A lot of the meters in town are still old and, and required, are required to be read going door to door. And we're getting away from that. We're working, trying to work with the county and some neighboring communities in order to do that. And we've been talking about that for really a couple of years now. It's a really complicated project and requires a lot. And Dan and the staff have been working really hard with our partners to try to wrap that up. And we're, we're hoping this year that we'll, we'll bring that, you know, And we're we're hoping this year that we'll we'll bring that uh, you know, before the city council, both for water meter replacements as well as the automated meter reading system. So in theory, as we replace meters, uh we'll get more accurate readings, which should also help our revenue. So we'll have to look again a year from now and see if it would necessitate any type of water increase or if we could put that off as we have. Um but the we've been able to um maintain a three-year fund balance and transfer some of that money over to the depreciation fund.
Hey, hey, Brian?
Yes.
Is DuPage County increasing their water rates at all?
Well, you I think you mean the DuPage Water Commission.
Right, yeah.
And they are not uh they are not proposing any rate increases here again to us.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, nothing to us. Uh that's their draft budget that is up for for hearing now and talked about, and there's no uh no increases. I think they haven't uh they're may they may receive an increase from City Chicago, but their intention is not to pass that on, they're able to uh keep keep the rate as it is.
Yeah, cuz I heard they were gonna get hit by Chicago, so I was wondering if it was gonna get passed on.
Um yeah, not not this year, we're not not expecting to. And if the final item I had for tonight again is just the motor fuel tax, which is page seven. And typically, the motor fuel fuel tax is a revenue we receive from the state based on population. And um that has has been increasing the last couple of years and will continue. The uh state has increased the uh taxes on the motor fuel tax in and in hence increasing the revenue to the city. There's also a couple of grants now that we have received as part of the bond fund uh through Illinois that's a couple of years old. So as you look through the MFT fund over the next several years, uh we'll see that we have sufficient revenues to also contribute to the, as I mentioned, to the street maintenance program in the fiscal year ending 2020 uh 22, I'm sorry, and leaving a balance forecasted at the end of fiscal year 24 at about 463,000. And typically, your MFT money isn't not like the general fund where you build a reserve over a few years. We get that money every year and the idea is to spend that for our our roads, our salt and things like that. And it really covers a lot of our operating expenses. But for this additional revenue from the state, which has now allowed us to uh now apply some of that where we would normally have to spend our our capital projects fund. And in terms of the overview and revenue, that's all I had tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions uh or if questions come up after the meeting tonight. But again, I think it's a good opportunity for the city council to, again, understand the the three-year forecast and then allow you to to get into the uh expense part of the of the budgets.
Brian, real quick, Mike, I'm sorry. Um Dan, what are we expecting for salt per ton this year, just out of curiosity?
As pricing per ton goes?
Yeah.
I'm I'm not sure yet, you know, based on what I'm seeing this year, uh probably be a couple percent up. Uh I won't see that till April.
Okay.
But I'm anticipating about a 2% increase over this year.
The reason I'm asking is because with all the demand the last month or so, should we turn around and try and put a deal together earlier to get better pricing? Because you know, the whole thing, supply and demand, if the demand is high like it has been the last month, maybe we should look into it, throw it out there.
And I have to take a look at the contract that we currently have, the contract. We went uh we're joint participants with the county of DuPage along with other municipalities. Um and and there's a couple of different opportunities um that we have, and I believe an extension of our contract might be one of them. Right, you know, at this point, I don't feel there's any need to be rushing into that.
I guess the question, you don't think we're going over 70 bucks per ton, do you?
We're currently, I believe we're at
Eighty-one oh three, Dan.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Eighty-one oh three a ton right now.
Yeah, currently.
Oh, so we're at eighty-one right now? Oh, my apologies, I didn't realize.
Right. Yeah, the prices that you're referring to, probably we haven't seen those prices in the last five years, I'd say.
Gosh, okay, not a problem, sorry to bother you about it. But yeah, if we can get 70, that'd be terrific, but that's not gonna happen, not a problem.
Mayor, I just want to remind, the the intention tonight is to focus on the three-year or the revenues. Yeah, the the expense portion, you know, we'll have the next the meetings for the next few days. So again, I'm open for any questions on the uh the revenues or if anybody has questions looking at that three-year snapshot.
No one? Okay. Well, then tomorrow night, our budget meetings will start, I believe, at um 6:30 tomorrow night. Uh Alderman Sullivan will be leading that as chair of the um Admin Finance Committee. The public is invited, those are open meetings. Uh so if you want to attend, uh feel free to do so, just make sure you wear your mask. That moves us on to department head information and questions. Do we have any questions for either Deputy Chief Norton or for Mr. Gonbeck? Mr. Gonbeck?
I have a question for myself, no, just kidding. O-Obviously, with all the uh uh snow that's been accumulating, it seems like it's been snowing nonstop for the last uh two to three weeks, uh we're home, we're having some machinery coming tomorrow. There'll be four pieces of equipment that are uh through a vendor. And we're gonna be knocking down a lot of piles at the intersections, including cul-de-sacs, trying to address cul-de-sacs. Um you know, so again, we're gonna see machinery out there and we're gonna be taking the snow from these piles and putting them within parkways. Um so there may be some calls that'll get generated just due to that operation. And nonetheless, we want to be proactive because obviously we don't want to see any motorists uh get into an accident due to blind corners.
Uh just for your information, uh at the corner of Kearney Road and Plainfield, I come out on off of Kearney on the Plainfield. And the west corner is so high that you can't see cars coming from the west.
Again, Mayor, that's a great point, you know, in in that respect, while it's not uh per really our jurisdiction, just out of the uh, you know, the nature of the beast, if you want to say, it does serve a lot of residents uh back in the Creekside subdivision, Brookridge subdivision. So uh we would take the opportunity to knock that pile down.
Even even as even if you as you exit city hall, parking lot, the piles right outside at the entrance and exit are high enough to where you can't catch traffic coming from the east.
Very, very true, very true, yes.
Dan, uh just to let you know, 71st and Clarendon Hills Road, that's a real bad one, just to let you know, so.
Maybe it's, yeah, there's there's a lot of them, uh and that's why we took the initiative to be proactive and before something happens. Um so we do have machinery coming in tomorrow.
Fantastic.
Joe?
Uh yes, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Hey, Dan, I uh was going around town to the first the first um rash of snow that we had. Couldn't help but notice in like all the street signs being covered because of you can't you can't see what streets you're on. Is there anything that can be can be done with that during, I mean, I know it's, you know, it's hit or miss. But I, you know, there's there's a ton of ti-signs that were just covered, you didn't know what streets you were on. Now, obviously, you know, I'm I'm looking, I'm looking from a safety standpoint, especially if, you know, you've got officers and stuff and people, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I I think it's been a little bit of an anomaly, you know, how cold the temperature's been and how much snow we've been receiving. So typically, we don't get that problem. Um but yeah, we've never really addressed that per se. And I know that's uh on the county roads, for example, you'll notice that the signals in some cases are very hard to see, if at all, in rural conditions, that's because of the LED lighting. Um in which case, depending on the situation, they'll call out the vendor to uh um, you know, basically sweep off the snow because the LEDs don't generate any um heat. So really, I I don't have a good answer for you. Once the sun comes up and the winds subside, uh those signs tend to, the snow tends to melt away from the signs rather quickly, Alderman.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything else, Mary?
Um Dan, if there's a an area in a neighborhood or something, should should the residents um who have concern uh contact municipal services or city hall to to put a request in?
Sure, and and I guess I just want to be cautious with that, too. I mean, uh we've heard over the last couple of snowstorms that's uh, you know, our driveway's been blocked, our aprons, we have a lot of snow. Depending on the situation, we'll take a look at those aprons, but uh you know, it's one thing we can't do is address every apron uh throughout town. We have associations that have piled the snow out into the roadways and it's getting difficult for us to come through there. So we're trying to work with these associations, it's just too much at one time. Uh we'll do what we can, but you know, I can't promise you that we're gonna be going into every resident's apron that has uh or ended a driveway that has snow and we're gonna be taking that out of there.
Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, and Dan, I'm not sure if residents realize, and I think this is is correct, that there is a ban on parking on the street when the snowfall exceeds an inch, is that true?
That is correct, yes.
And how does that get enforced? Are you guys running into issues with your team on the on the road now with that or is that a big issue or no?
Well, we do.
I just don't think people realize it.
Yeah, I I, you know, I think the majority of the residents are are rather well-educated in that. Uh there is the occasional where unfortunately, residents will put their vehicles out in front of their driveways just because they've uh completed their, you know, shoveling their driveways. Uh you know, so when that in that case, we're courteous, the drivers are courteous enough to allow, okay, a one-time forgiveness, if you want to say, but when it starts to be uh consistent and habitual, we'll get a uh, you know, in touch with the police department and request the police department to go out there and provide a, you know, a ticket or a warning, whatever the case is. Um so in in most of the cases, it works out. Um but you know, it's just one of those things where we understand frustrations run high during these times.
Yeah, cuz I've talked to some residents and some didn't realize it, some thought it was two or three inches, none. I didn't find one that knew it was an inch.
Well, we could advertise it again through our direct connect and again.
Yeah, I I think it might make sense to do that.
Sure.
That and not uh plowing snow into the street.
Correct.
I stopped a resident from doing that today.
Correct, yeah, we've had uh basically people throw shovels at our trucks once in a while, so it hasn't happened in a while. But unfortunately, it does, you know, tempers run high and we understand that.
Anything else for Dan? How about anything for Deputy Chief Norton? I'm included.
Thank you, Mayor. I received a phone call from a gentleman, which was very interesting, that uh as Dan mentioned, you leave your car in the street, it gets uh ticketed. And this gentleman asked, why didn't a few residents get towed, actually? Because he thought the the ordinance was if you park in the street and you create this issue, your vehicle gets towed and and he's part of a condo association that the few residents were warned. And they still parked in the street, he was curious why Darian didn't tow a couple of vehicles over the weekend. So I thought a little more on the extreme side, but does make a good point that is there like a certain limit to when we start towing vehicles that keep leaving them in the street or how is that generally uh enforced?
First thing we try to do is through compliance, we try to make contact with the owner if we can. Uh in most cases, I wouldn't say it every time. If it's somebody who's routinely parked out there or Public Works says they've this car's been in here for a week and you can see the pile of snow, chances are they're just gonna get a citation. Uh in my nearly 20 years here, I can't recall ever towing a vehicle due to a snow emergency, so we really, really try not to do that. I would say it would probably become more of a nuisance for if they're obstructing somebody's driveway or if it's parked where it's obstructing the roadway traffic, whatnot. I don't think that that would be something we would do. However, the ordinance does allow us to do that. So again, we try to make contact first in most cases, and when that doesn't work out, then obviously somebody who's gone and done this a couple of times or it's been there for a duration, we try to take care of it that way.
Brian?
Okay, yeah, it seemed a little extreme.
Uh Tom, if you're uh talking maybe about Portsmouth uh Portsmouth condos, uh we did get communications there and, you know, we do recognize that that area is a little bit unique because they are permitted by ordinance to park there even overnight. So uh Chris and Dan are working on on uh something over there that they'll communicate to the management company. And the management company will will get to the residents, but that particular area is a little more problematic.
Okay.
Anything else? Brian?
Uh Mayor, I I did forget to mention one item. Um yesterday, the garbage company uh on Monday had services normal, but today, because of the uh bad weather, they postponed uh the garbage pickup services for today. And so anybody who was scheduled for pickup on Tuesday is will move to Wednesday. So everybody will get moved up a day on Friday, will get picked up on Saturday. Um we did put that out on direct connect and social media, but in case there's anybody else watching now, we just wanted to let them know that.
You mean moved back a day, Brian, not moved up? Right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so if your pickup was on supposed to be on Tuesday today, it would be moved to Wednesday.
Right.
Correct.
I can see someone, I can see someone saying move it up a day and I just wanted to be sure, that's all.
I believe there was also a delay in some mail deliveries. We received no mail in our area today. So I don't know if anybody else experienced that, but we there was no mail delivered in our area today. Okay. Takes us to the warrants, uh treasurer calling.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 2021 dash 20 in the amount of $453,960.10 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended February the 11th in the amount of $277,112.45 for a total be approved of $731,072.55.
Motion approved.
Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Belzer. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzer?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrants have been approved, monthly report, my.
Uh the monthly report for the nine months uh through our fiscal year ended January 31st reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $13,164,789, expenses of $9,65,560, for a current balance of $5,064,765. Water fund year-to-date revenue, $5,650,112, expenses of $5,516,150, current balance of $3,593,387. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $1,084,558, expenses of $326,392, current balance of $1,317,137. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue, $6,534, expenses of $15,604, current balance of $2,429,923. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue, $252,716, expenses of $567,356, current balance of $6,327,887.
Does anyone have a question on the monthly report for treasurer calling? If none, we move on to standing committee reports, and do the aldermen have anything to report? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our the police committee meeting was canceled uh this evening due to lack of agenda items. Our next scheduled uh meeting will be on Monday, March 15th at 6:00 PM. Um pending agenda items.
Thank you. Anyone else, Alderman Belzer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh the municipal services will have their next meeting a week from today on Monday, February the 22nd at 7:00 PM uh via Zoom. Thank you. But what is?
The um Economic Development Committee had a a great meeting uh last February 4th. And the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 4th at 7:00 PM. Um our meetings have been via Zoom. Um and does the mayor know when he'll be making a decision about um bringing standing committees into in-person?
I was hoping to do that in March. I was going to offer that to the council. Possibility of resuming in-person meetings in March, at least holding committee commission in-person march. But I haven't defended the statement yet.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And then um as mentioned earlier, when Brian was presenting some of the uh preliminary uh budget overview, um we do start our uh budget planning workshop workshop uh for fiscal year 22 um tomorrow evening here um in person at 6:30 in the council chambers and via Zoom. And um that's Wednesday, February 17th. And then um it'll be every week moving forward um from Tuesday, February 23rd, Tuesday, March 2nd, Tuesday, March 9th as needed, Tuesday, March 16th as needed, with the budget um coming in front of city council for a vote on Monday, April 5th.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary. Um, takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. And we don't, I don't believe anybody in the audience, that's why we move to old business. The B non moves to agenda. There's nothing there. And it moves us finally to new business. We have two items. I have a consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorized to the sale of personal property owned by the city area. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman on. Any questions? If none, we move on.
Kenny?
Hi.
Juan?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Shower?
Hi.
Gustafson?
Hey.
Plistic?
Hi.
Belzak?
Hi.
Seven I's.
The uh motions have been approved and items have been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to authorize the attendance of budget funds up to $10,000. The agency for ingredient will hire over solutions, conduct testing, establish an eligibility list for which to hire police officers to bill and anticipate all improvements. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Sullivan. Any questions? If none, we move on.
Shower?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Juan?
Hi.
Kenny?
Hi.
Gustafson?
Hi.
Plistic?
Hi.
Belzak?
Hi.
Seven I's.
Motion to approve. Takes us to questions and comments and announcements. I'd just like to announce uh one thing. As Alderman Sullivan said, these are our budget discussions are online. As someone called me on the phone yesterday, if you look at your tax bill, Darien is still the best spent around. A lot of people heard some numbers today, and a lot of people have a this perception of what it costs for them to get services in the city of Darien. If you look at your tax bill, Darien is one of the genius privings on your tax bill. You got your snowplop, your street repair, your police service, et cetera, et cetera. If you really want to see or hear how your money's being spent, watch or attend our budget meetings. Because from conversations I have with people, there's a lot of this perception of how we spend our money and where that money goes. So please take advantage of our budget areas. And I think you'll be very surprised when you see how conservative they are in terms of budgeting your dollars. That's all I have. Anyone else? If nothing else, motion to adjourn. Alderman on, second by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion, uh, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.